Meeting of the Clarksville Montgomery County Board of Education will now come to order. Will all rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item on the agenda is Point of Pride's Award. Dr. Vedder?
Yes, I would like to welcome our Chief Communications Officer, Anthony Johnson, to honor all of our Points of Pride tonight. There are quite a few.
Yes. Good evening, Board. It is my pleasure to present nearly 100 Point of Pride certificates this evening to our outstanding students and educators. We will begin first with our, all of our state winners from the T double S double A State Wrestling Championships. We will go in alphabetical order by school, and we'll start with the individual students who placed, and then we will go to the teams. So I will ask after individuals have placed and had your picture taken, if you kind of stay close to the front, because I'll call your team up to join you. So first, if I could have the administrators and girls wrestling coaches from Clarksville High School to please come forward. Clarksville High School administrators and coaches. And our first individual award is Shania Weisinger, who placed second in the girls 235. Congratulations, Shania. Is she here? Next, Ava Johnson, who placed third in the girls 120. And our last individual award winner from Clarksville High School is Brooklyn Whiteside, who placed... Brooklyn is here. And Brooklyn placed third in the girls 138. And since it's taken a little time as, as Brooklyn gets her picture taken, if the rest of the team could kind of start making your way up to the front, the rest of the Clarksville High School Girls Wrestling Team? All right. Y'all can go ahead and join up at the front. As they make their way up, I am pleased to announce that the Clarksville High School Girls Wrestling Team placed second in the T double S double A Dual Championship and third in the T double S double A Individual Championship. This team consists of students Atiana Atkins, Cameron Blais, J.C. Cox, Marta Doreo, Anaya Gibson, Gracie Hoilman, Malia Howie, Sierra Heway, Emma Hoosier, Ava Johnson, Madison Livingston, Valeria Ortiz, Nora Pena Corona, Tatiana Pena Corona, Angel Robles, Miranda Robles, Annette Rodriguez, Brooklyn Whiteside, Shania Whiteside, Shania Weisinger, Ava Ziegler, Coaches Doug Badon, or Baden, sorry, I messed that one up, Caitlin Gilmore, David Johnson, and Landon Whiteside. Congratulations Wildcats. Okay, and next on the agenda, but could not be here tonight, but I do want to recognize Shania Johnson from Kirkwood High, who won third in the girls 152, and we will send her certificate to the school. So... So next, if I could have the Montgomery Central High School administrators and girls wrestling coaches to please come forward. All right. As Ms. Hausen makes her way up, we will recognize first Audrey Levendusky, who placed first in the girls 145. And next, we will recognize Seriana O'Connor, who placed third in the girls 165. All right, now if I could have the entire Montgomery Central High School Girls Wrestling Team to please come forward. The Montgomery Central High School Girls Wrestling Team placed fourth in the T double S double A Individual Championship. The team consists of students Devon Joost, Gracie Tuberville, Zakai Aligan, Emily Whitmore, Zo, oh, sorry, Joe Kolaski, Audrey Levendusky, Lily Peters, Seriana O'Connor, and Deshae Jones, with coaches Corey Wright, Steve Heberer, Derek Levendusky, and Heidi Levendusky. Congratulations, Montgomery Central. All right, and if next I could have the Northwest High School administrators and girls wrestling coaches to please come forward. And the first recognition from Northwest High School is for Sally Johnson, who placed second in the girls 145. And next Cheyenne Mikowski, who placed third in the girls 114. And she's at an academic event this evening. Now if I could have the entire Northwest High School Wrestling Team to come forward. As they make their way up, I am pleased to announce that the Northwest High School Girls Wrestling Team placed third in the T double S double A Dual Championship. This team consists of Maria Betancourt, Emily Castleman, Niara Dixon, Sunshine Ellis, Madison Espero, Ashen Hayward, Amaya Hill, Sally Johnson, Cheyenne Mikowski, Addison Morris, Teveriona, or Tyveronia Munin. Did I mess, can you please tell me how to pronounce that so I get it right? One more time? Tyvenoria, beautiful name, Munin, Carly Patrick, Yasara Rivera Ramos, Angelina Rosario, Haley Smart, Cheyenne Tandy, Karina Villa, and Coaches Chris Bedell, Cassie Mosley, Levi Mueller, Blake Spink, and Robert Hutchinson. Congratulations. Okay, and the West Creek High School wrestlers are actually preparing for a national tournament, and I just want to confirm that no one showed up. I talked to Dr. Farrell just a little bit ago to confirm. Okay, I'm still going to recognize though, that on the boy's side, we had Stanford Thompson, who placed third in the boys double A 175. Josonia Barfield placed first in the girls 126. Mariana Bowen placed first in the girls 138. Lexi Dean placed second in the girls 120, and Alicia Rankin placed third. And the team together placed second in the T double S double A Individual Championships. Congratulations, West Creek. All right, moving over to J R O T C. Now if I could have the Northwest High School J R O T C Academic Team Administration and your instructor to please come forward. As they make their way up, I am very pleased to announce that this team from Northwest is... Come on now. This team from Northwest is advancing to the J R O T C Leadership and Academic Bowl Championship in Washington DC. The team will compete in the academic category against Army, Navy, and Air Force J-Lab Teams across the nation in late June. Congratulations to Cadets Timothy Burley, Catherine Kim, Sunshine Ellis, and Enrique Emiliano, and your instructor, Chief Warrant Officer Jay Perez. We will all be cheering you on in June. All right, and next if I could have the Montgomery Central High School Drill and Color Guard Team, along with your administration and instructor, instructor to please come forward. As they make their way up, and you may, you may see them and think, I thought I just saw them last year. And you did, because for the second year in a row, they competed in the Seventh Brigade Sergeant Major Paul Gray Drill Championships. The Seventh Brigade consists of J R O T C programs from the states of Michigan, Ohio, Indiana, Kentucky, and Tennessee, all vying to be called the Warrior Brigade Champion. And for the second year in a row, this team swept the J R O T C Seventh Brigade Sergeant Major Paul Gray Drill Championships during our spring break. Winning second place Armed Color Guard, first place Unarmed Inspection, first placed unarmed platoon, overall championship trophy, grand championship belt, grand championship ring, and Cadet Captain Gage McMaines competed for and was awarded a four-year ROTC scholarship to attend APSU. Congratulations to the cadets behind me Jubilee Ashford, Ray Black, Daniel Booth, Gracie Carmen, Grayden Cochran, Serenity DeBian, Sean DeBian, Abigail Epps, Shelby Epps, Gavin Fidler, Ella Galassi, Kyle Heath, Leila Jones, Lilly Nutson, Anderson Lowell, Jessica Mooney, Lilian Pilsen, Grant Polling, Kenneth Reese, Samari Robinson, Kamara Smith, Myla Smith, Ivy Tubbs, Carson Waynich, Lucas Worrell, and their instructor, the Command Sergeant Major James Manning. And I want to make one more note, that this team was invited and selected by the Seventh Brigade's leadership, along with West Creek, to compete in the upcoming Rocky Mountain Drill Championships to be held in Denver, Colorado in April, at the National Western Complex. Really exciting for this team, and if you're looking for a chaperone, I love Colorado. Congratulations. Okay, last month, we recognized several all-state musicians from CMCSSS, but we had one student who could not attend. If Andrew Wall, along with your administrator, and if your teacher, Ms. Rousher here as well, could please come forward. As Andrew makes his way up, we want to congratulate him for competing in a very competitive competition to earn a spot in the Tennessee All-State Choir. Great job, Andrew. All right, and for our final Points of Pride, we are going to recognize our 2022-2023 Reward Schools. We received confirmation from the state later than usual. Note the 2022-2023, and we're celebrating in 2024, but that is okay, because we are excited to honor these schools now for their accomplishments last school year. In Tennessee, schools are recognized as a reward school when they demonstrate high levels of performance. Last year, in 2020-23, the criteria was established based on the performance on the federal accountability system. If I could have the elementary level directors, Jessica Harris and Amanda Nix, along with Chief Academic Officer Dr. Shanda Doughty to come forward, as we recognize each of these schools. Our first reward school that we will recognize, if the administration from East Montgomery Elementary School could please come forward. Congratulations to the East Montgomery Tigers. Next, and I know she's here, I saw Ms. Vaughn. If the Montgomery Central Elementary School Administration could please come forward. Congratulations to the Montgomery Central Elementary School Indians. Next, if the Rossview Elementary School Administration could please come forward. Congratulations Sangho Elementary School Hawks. And last but not least, if the Spanish Immersion at Barksdale Elementary School Administration could please come forward. Oh, well, we'll just go with that, and then I'll go back. Yeah, if you'll come forward, I'll go out of alphabetical order. My apologies. Congratulations, Spanish Immersion. Okay, and now really last but certainly not least, if Sangho Elementary School Administration could please come forward. Congratulations Sangho. And that concludes this evening's Points of Pride.
Very much want to congratulate all those recipients of the Point of Pride Awards tonight. If there are many of you here for the Point of Pride, we would like to take a moment, before we get into our public engagement, to leave the building. I will pause for a minute to give you that chance. I think most of them left as their names were called and units were called out, but... Next item on the agenda is public conversation. Want to inform everyone that is participating tonight, that when you reach the podium area, to please turn on the microphone by pressing the right silver button. The timer will display on the screen to show you the amount of time that you have, and the microphone light will show it's red and active. Microphone light will start flashing when you have the last minute of your allocated time. And after five minutes, the microphone will automatically turn off. Our first speaker this evening is Sandra Brandon. If you would step to the microphone.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Board for allowing me to speak. This is my colleague, Joyce Britton. She's our site or school-based specialist that works with all the schools here in Montgomery County. And thank you for everyone in the community for allowing me to speak. I first want to thank two of your Board members, Mrs. Pace and Mr. Garland. Mrs. Pace, I understand you were a previous BIG for many, many years, so I thank you for your support of our organization. And Mr. Garland, you served, I think, as our Board President for several years, so thank you very much. For those of you who don't know, Big Brothers Big Sisters has been in Clarksville since 1975. We are one of the top five oldest nonprofits in the community, and our main purpose is to create and support one-to-one mentoring relationships that ignite the power and potential in youth. Studies have shown that eighty percent, eighty-two percent, excuse me, of our mentees experience an increase in self-confidence, and sixty percent an increased sense of the future. I just wanted to speak to the Board to kind of let you know how things are going with our program. Currently, we have seventy-seven active matches of youth in our community. Thirty-two of those are school-based matches, and we are in eleven schools total. Currently, we have ten littles who are on the waiting list in the school-based program to be part of our program. I also wanted to let you guys know that over and over again, we hear from parents, and we also hear from teachers at the school, our educators, that kids that are in the program, they really see an improvement in their grades, they see an improvement in their participation and their behavior over and over again. Joyce actually brought to my attention some sad news though sometimes, but it's actually good, it can be good, is that they develop these relationships with their BIG over many years, and are more comfortable sometimes telling them something than their parent or instructor. And just this, is it this year or this month? This year alone, we had two littles that had suicidal ideations and actually spoke to their BIG first about it. And thankfully, you know, we have the support of the school system, so they were able to speak to the administration at the school and get those littles the help they needed. But it truly shows how they're comfortable and how they truly appreciate their relationship with their, with their BIG. Just want to ask you guys for your continued support and access to our schools. If there's anything that you could help us do and to get in front of more schools, currently we're in eleven, we'd love to expand the program to at least half the elementary schools that are there. A lot of the schools and administration just don't know about our program, so helping us get in front of them would truly be wonderful. And then we also have two fun things coming up that we want to invite the Board to, and the community for that matter. We have a end-of-school bash at Rotary Park on June the first from four to six. The community as a whole is invited, will have food available and activities. And then we also have a back-to-school party on August the third at Liberty Park. At Liberty Park, and what time is that one?
What time?
Yeah.
Two to four?
Two to four. So thank you guys for letting us speak. Thank you, Ms. Pace and Mr. Garland, and we hope to see you guys at some of our events.
Thank you. Our next speakers, Ann Martha?
Good evening, eat friends and neighbors. I just wanted to take a few minutes to share the empirical data I've gathered during my forty-year teaching career. Thirty-five of those years spent at Fort Campbell, in reference to the naming of the new school. Why are we building a school? Certainly, we can all agree, we're building a new school for the children of our community. With that fact in mind, our decisions should be child-centered. I taught at Andre Lucas Elementary School for over twenty years. Andre Lucas was a Vietnam veteran who sacrificed himself for others and the mission. He was certainly a deserving individual. The good news for our nation and our community is that we are surrounded by military personnel that exemplify service, mission, and sacrifice. But back to the mission here, naming a school. The empirical data is clear. In all the years I worked at Andre Lucas, not only were the children and the parents unaware of who Andre Lucas was and what he accomplished, but the Andre and Andre Lucas was rarely used. Let me give a shout-out to the central office personnel who suggested the very appropriate name for the new school near Fort Campbell that includes the word freedom. This name is an amazing suggestion because it is a name that children can understand. Freedom is a noun that has meaning. Freedom is a goal we can all rally around. Freedom is a mission that should be taught and understood by all the citizens in the United States of America. Freedom is the reason for the existence of the largest employer in Clarksville, Montgomery County, Fort Campbell. As of the fourth quarter of 2023, the Fort Campbell population included thirty thousand active-duty military soldiers, fifty-two thousand military family members, eight thousand civilian and contract workers, eighty-three thousand retirees. If valley is a problem in the suggested name, let's use another land form: Freedom Plain, Freedom Meadow, Freedom Rings, Freedom Riders. What about airborne freedom? Personally, I simply like Freedom Elementary. How about naming the upcoming high school Freedom High School, Honor, Duty, Country? Let us honor all our military and community members. Let everyone associated with Fort Campbell know how grateful we are to have this military base in our community. Let's take this amazing suggestion from our central office staff and collaborate, cooperate, and honor our entire community, including our school board, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Garland, Mr. Berry. Let's take this opportunity to put the children at the forefront of our decision. There are not enough public buildings for all of the role models that came before us, but we can put our efforts into creating quality citizens for the future of Clarksville, Montgomery County.
Our next speaker is Christopher Carbon.
Good evening, Board members, Dr. Luna Vedder and School Council. My name is Chris Carbon, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. Tonight, you have the opportunity to promote academic success, enrich student-athlete academic experience, and encourage a more positive school and community culture. All you have to do to continue to be champions for the student and community is sanction middle school wrestling. I've been informed that the reason why middle school wrestling will not be sanctioned for the 24-25 school year is because of budget constraints. There is a plan to sanction middle school wrestling the following year. With that said, I'm not asking for your money this year. I'm asking for opportunity. Opportunity for our student-athletes to compete at the highest level within our state, especially the inaugural year of a sanctioned middle school state championship. To borrow from Teddy Roosevelt, "The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who knows the great enthusiasms, the great devotions, and spends himself in a worthy cause, who at best, if he wins, knows the thrills of high achievement, and if he fails, at least fails daring greatly, such as play shall never be with those cold and timid souls, who know neither victory or defeat." What a shame it would be if our student-athletes, our wrestlers, are those cold and timid souls who don't get to know the thrill of victory and the hardship of defeat. To partner with you, we want to help solve the budget constraint problem. As a wrestling community, we have made it easy for you administratively. Going into next school year, seven of the eight middle schools in CMCSSS will have an AAU middle school program in place, all of them with coaches who annually undergo background checks so that they may coach our youth. These programs are self-funded, handle their own transportation needs, and have tremendous community support. There is only one piece to the puzzle missing, and you guessed it, the CMCS School Board sanctioning of middle school wrestling. The request tonight is for you as a Board to sanction the sport of wrestling at the middle school level on the provision for the 24-25 school year that we are self-funded. I say again, sanction us under the provision that we are self-funded. If budgeting is the reason for not sanctioning us, then allow us, then allow us to help be a solution to the problem, be problem solvers, and absorb that cost as we have been doing so, so our students don't miss out this upcoming inaugural season. I can't guarantee you a state championship. What I can guarantee you is that by sanctioning wrestling, you give your administrators another tool in their arsenal to foster school pride, community involvement, and an enhanced academic experience that will serve our student-athletes and our community for years to come. By sanctioning wrestling, you help promote a healthy lifestyle, provide opportunity, inspire our student-athletes to pursue constant self-improvement. I would be reminiscent if I failed to mention the efforts of John Miller and Dr. Luna Vedder. Please understand that the two of them have long been advocates for our student-athletes. They work tirelessly for our students with little applause. Tonight, I would like to recognize their efforts and present the notion that my presentation tonight is in no way an attempt to diminish their efforts or cast a stone in their or the school board's direction. In fact, we couldn't have chosen another two individuals we'd rather have in their place. As a wrestling community, we want to come alongside you and continue to promote all of the virtues that make our school district a great place to work and coach in. More importantly, a great place for our student-athletes to have the opportunity to excel and dare to be great in the arena of their choice. They say the squeaky wheel gets the grease. Well, tonight, your wrestling community is squeaking, and we need some grease. They say the squeaky wheel gets the grease. Well, tonight, your wrestling community is squeaking, and we need some grease. Please consider the proposed financial provision and allow our wrestlers to compete. I always remind my students and athletes to be in the business of making it happen rather than being in the business of making excuses. Where there is a will, there is a way. Together, we can make this happen. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I would love the opportunity to field those questions.
Our next speaker is Jakari Crockett. Hope I pronounced that correctly.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to first start off by thanking you, board members, for allowing me to speak at today's meeting. Many of you know what has sparked the flame leading me to address the board. Unfortunately, I was advised I would need to refrain from speaking on Landon's case until further notice. With that being said, I will use my time to speak on behalf of parents and students within the special needs community. Since the start of this whole ordeal, I have witnessed many parents come forward in regards to mishandling of children with special needs within CMCS-S. I will address the fact that many of these parents have been met with unconcerned efforts and course of action by the school's appointed board members regarding the safety of our children. According to CMCS-S, it expects all students to be treated with dignity and respect. While the state of Tennessee allows the use of corporal punishment, CMCS-S prohibits it. Although I believe the law should be demolished statewide, it is in fact prohibited for students with special needs as well as the district. If children with special needs are supposed to be prohibited from this law, why are there so many families left without answers in reference to the abuse of children in the hands of some adults responsible for the care and their safety? The schools, Clarksville's district attorney, the board, and the city of Clarksville's officials have all been appointed under the guise of serving their people. But how can you claim to stand on that oath while marginalizing a whole group of students? Clarksville is a military community. Are deployed servicemen and women, who are parents, have been directly impacted by these injustices? What kind of example are we setting for future educators and generations when abusive behavior is condoned by those entrusted with the safety of our defenseless needs students? How are parents supposed to trust the district's decision on such serious matters when there aren't appropriate actions or proper protocols being followed on your part? The lack of proper training and education in regards to dealing with special needs children is evident. What support is being offered to these teachers entrusted with the livelihood of our children? How can you, as the board, confidently assure us of the safety of our children when I am not the only parent standing before you today due to the negligence on behalf of all students involved in these matters? This experience has opened my eyes to a systematic issue that demands immediate attention. We need stricter policies on student-teacher interactions, clear guidelines on acceptable behavior from educators, and a zero-tolerance policy for any form of abuse or harm. This is especially crucial for families of children with individualized education programs or FIVO four plans who constantly report abuse and assault by teachers only to have their voices silenced and their claims covered up because the county's image is more important. To the teachers who go above and beyond, offering our children the necessary love and care needed for them to thrive, no matter race and disability, thank you. To the teachers who have taken their obligation as mandated reporters seriously, even when shunned by those responsible with the same duty, thank you. I would like to take the time to make sure you all know that you are valued more than you may get credit for. It is not easy dealing with children, let alone a child with disabilities, but your bravery and dedication has not gone unnoticed. Kudos to you, teachers. To the families that feel as though they may feel silenced and ignored, I want you all to know, I will continue to fight fiercely, not just for Landon, but for all parents seeking answers, actions, and justice for their children. I hope that you seize this opportunity to rectify your wrongs for every child whose well-being your rules and district vowed to protect and have failed. To our son, despite the struggles we're facing, we're thankful that you are our child. We are proud of you, Landon. You are not a burden. Autism does not define you. We hurt for you. We are your biggest voice, and we will always be your biggest advocate. God chose mommy and daddy to be your parents for a reason. You got the right one, justice for Landon.
Mary Beth Knight. Mary Beth Knight. I'm sorry, I skipped Margarita Boas. Ms. Boas?
Thank you so much. My mother's name was Marjorie, and that's why I'm named Marjorie. But I've always been known as Dee, but I had to submit my legal name to be able to speak to you all. I am here on the behalf of a number of Clarksville residents to have the new school just outside Fort Campbell named for the late Sidney Brown, Command Sergeant Major Sidney Brown. I sent each of you a letter explaining our reasoning for that, and I appreciate that several of you have responded to it. Sidney was a longtime resident of Clarksville, Montgomery County. He was born in Birmingham, Alabama, at a time when he was not permitted to go to public schools for the most part, to the general schools, but always believed in education. When he finished high school, he joined the military and was assigned to then Fort Campbell. Was in and out of Fort Campbell a number of times, serving with the Hundred and First. And when the Hundred and First decided to adopt the airborne school and later adopted for the black soldiers to go to the airborne school, he was the first one to enlist in that and retired as a command sergeant major. He was impressed as a young man by the Buffalo soldiers who came to Birmingham with their silver wings and whatever, and that's what led him to join the military in the first place. And later served in Vietnam, served in Germany, always with distinction. And I told you all in the letter that among other things, he was part of the group that was sent into Little Rock for the integration of the schools there and was disappointed that those black soldiers were not able to go into the schools themselves, but their commander said, "You have to stay back because we're here to maintain the peace. And if you go in, then the peace may not be maintained." They stayed back. They kept the peace in Little Rock, and the schools there were integrated. After thirty years of service in the military, much of it at Fort Campbell, Sidney Brown retired and entered Austin P. And established a distinguished record at Austin P. And in fact, now, the Military Affairs Group at Austin P. has a scholarship named for him that can go to military families, military veterans who are at Austin P, their families also. He was elected to the county commission in Montgomery County in nineteen ninety-four. And among other things was the commissioners liaison with the school board. And so he dealt with maybe some of you back then. I don't know. Well, maybe a couple of you. Anyway, so you know what Sidney, yes, thank you, Jimmy. You know what Sidney's connections were with our local school system. He was on a number of committees, chairman of the youth detention committee of the Montgomery County, and was a volunteer with numerous local and state agencies and groups. And during his service in District Nine, he proposed a number of initiatives, among them worked very hard to establish the Veterans Home here, which is now the Wendell Gilbert Veterans Home. But Governor Don Sunquist appointed him the commissioner of the Tennessee State Veterans Nursing Home Board, which eventually developed the Veterans Home that's out in the north end of town. All of this time, he still was working with youth. And he and a group of friends bought some property at Birchwood Park, what is now Birchwood Park, but they bought some property there to begin working with the youth in the area and helping them with ball games and this sort of thing. And several years ago, the city took that property and developed an actual city park there. They sold it to the city.
You ran out of time, I'm sorry. We appreciate your comments. Next speaker is Mary Beth Knight.
Good afternoon. My name is Mary Beth Knight. I'm coming forward today as a mother who is scared, a mother who is mad, a mother who has had enough. September of 2023, my daughter was assaulted by a male student for being small-chested. My daughter was suspended for dropping her backpack as the male student was charging at her. I was told because she dropped the backpack, she was giving the other student a sign that she was ready to fight. My daughter's sixteenth birthday will never hold a special memory. That is the day she was embarrassed and got in trouble for being beat up by a male. Her exact words to me, "That day, I learned that the system believes it's okay to be sexually harassed and beat up by the opposite sex." Fall of 2023 was one of the worst times for my family. The second day of my son's first year of middle school started months of bullying and being physically hurt. From being called too white to have brown siblings, to the adopted retarded kid, to coming home with handprint marks on his neck just to be told, "Oh, the cameras wasn't pointing to the kids on the bus, and we just don't have the funding to hire more bus aides." But yet, CMCS is suing social media for not protecting our students? Seems we need to listen to our own advice. November 2023, I receive a phone call from my child, not an adult, that he was beat up in the bathroom, his shoes and socks was ripped off his feet and thrown in a dirty toilet. When I got to the school, I still had not heard from an adult. While talking to the SOR, the principal came behind me and said, "Well, he's wearing his shoes now." At that moment, I decided someone had to stand up, and that's when I decided to run for school board. During my run, I had so many teachers and parents reach out to me with their stories. Not only is it sad and horrible, it's absolutely disgusting. You have a child who is kicked out of school for good for a vape that's in a car that he wasn't using or had in his person, no proof that it even was his. He has never been in trouble. Should he have gotten in trouble for this? Yes. But not allowed to walk with his peers his senior year is nuts to me when we have a teacher who was caught on camera assaulting a disabled child and the child is still walking the halls. You have teachers that are writing, "I hate my job, but I need my job," over and over while being abused by students, just to be told by admins that you're writing up. Too many students and parents are getting mad. Every day, there's a new article in the news about assault on a disabled child or a teacher caught with drugs. It's happening everywhere, not just Clarksville. When are we as parents, teachers, admins, and school board members going to stop fighting and pull together for our future? I encourage you as board members to be in the schools more. Listen to the students, the teachers, and the parents. Make a difference. You were voted in to make a difference, not just push the button. I may not have won my primaries, but I'm still standing here fighting for what's best for our future. I will continue to hold this sign high and scream justice for our children, justice for our teachers, and justice for Landon. Thank you.
Next speaker is Sarge Lopez. I can say that name.
All right, let's go ahead and address the big old elephant in the room, right? Sarge ain't wearing his cowboy hat. There's a reason. There's a reason because I'm not here as a grandparent or a legal guardian. No, I'm here as an associate to the Bromberey National Party. That's a Chicano civil rights group made in the nineteen sixties by Dr. David Sanchez. And I want to speak a little bit about that before we get down to business. We believe that there's some disproportionate amount of service that's going to our Latino children here at Clarksville, Montgomery County school system. It seems that there's reports that are not being filed correctly, that there's children that are being abused, and these are from the Latino community. And we can't stand that. We will not stand for that. So in saying that, so what I would like to express is that we take a look at policies. We have to take a look at the reporting policies for any incidents that happen, especially between a school and a student. All right, now that we got all the ugliness out of the way, let's get down to business. And that's the naming of elementary school number twenty-six. Forgive me, I'm gonna do a lot of name dropping, and because I'm gonna do a lot of name dropping, my speech impediment might come out. Now, if my parents had an extra $7,000 to take me to give me school choice or, you know, a private school, maybe they would have fixed this problem. But we're a bunch of poor ranchers, so here I am. So last year, Wes Golden advocated for the citizens of Montgomery County to come out to the county commission and express any desires that they want, to use our First Amendment speech. So after reading an article by Clarksville now Jordan Remfro about the naming of Freedom Valley, I thought, hey, I think it's long past time. Why is not named Wilma Rudolph Elementary? There's some discussion there, and so I wrote a little speech. I presented my argument to the county commission, and especially using Joshua Bill, which is not a direct quote. County Commissioner Joshua Bill said, "When a citizen speaks to the county commission, it becomes a county issue." And the naming of the school was an issue for me because she did so many great things and everything like that. So we come, and then I spoke at the last school board meeting also. And also did that. After the county commission meeting, a lot of people started blowing up my phone, started calling. I was out there waving signs for Mary Beth Knight at the election commission, and people were saying, "I love the idea, Wilma Rudolph. We love it, we love it, we love it. But what about this person? What about that person? What about this person?" And Lori Mason, me and her had a conversation. If you don't know Lori Mason, it's okay. She's a very underappreciated person here in Clarksville. She pretty much holds all the county commissions together. She just, she suggested, or sorry, all the nonprofit groups together. She just, she suggested, or sorry, all the nonprofit groups together. She's the one that suggested that, and I took it to social media. And social media loved it. They loved the idea. They were coming up. They were saying, how can we help kind of this and everything like that. So after doing that, so I'm sorry, I lost my place there. So after that conversation, I figured that's what people wanted. So I will withdraw my support for Wilma Rudolph in case so we can hold that for a three school complex like Rossby, West Creek, something like that. I think that would be more appropriate because she's big, we need big. What I want to support now is Jimmy Terry. Logistically speaking, Sergeant Major Brown, it's the choice because he's cool. I would even say Jimi Hendrix musical, but Jimmy Terry Senior is what the people want. We should finally give the people what they want. This is a chance to mend wrongs. Let's give him Jimmy Terry. There's a chance to inspire. Let's give him Jimmy Terry.
Our next speaker is Luther Hutchinson.
Good evening, Board. My name is Luther Hutchinson. I do appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm not going to take a lot of time, but the first, what I wanted to do tonight was, one, introduce the Michael L. Sutton Social Club, a newly established nonprofit organization here in Montgomery County, and also to propose one of our programs that we want to roll out next year. And that is the Senior Sponsor Program. In that Senior Sponsor Program, we would like to ask sponsoring organizations to, once we identify a student in need that have a financial need, we would like that sponsoring organization to take care of a certain non-negotiable item such as a yearbook, the capping gown with the announcement pack, senior pictures, prom, birthday and Christmas gift, just to bring some cheer and some sunshine to that student who otherwise wouldn't have those things. And so with that program, we want to clarify that, first of all, that is not a mentoring program. So we would not need to connect with that student in or outside of school. One, we're asking sponsoring organizations to be a part of this thing, and even though we can speak for our own, that we have background checks, we've passed background checks to be a part of this social club, we don't know that situation for those sponsoring organizations that we'll reach out to. So we would just ask that the school, what we're asking of the school is to, one, to identify where those needs are. We know that if we promote this thing publicly, we're going to get those families in need, but we're also going to get at least one or two who is just looking for, you know, just who doesn't necessarily need that or don't have that extreme need of the families that we're trying to target. We're also asking for the school to be able to facilitate the donation of these things. Again, we don't need to, we don't need to have the identifying information. We don't need to reach out to these students outside of school. We just want to serve a need. And so what the school can do is, one, to identify those kids, and then, two, to be able to facilitate the transfer of those donations. Would also, we would like to roll this out next school year, if at all possible. And we have at least three organizations who's committed to it. Hopefully, if we can get behind, get with the school system, partner with the school system and promote this thing, it will take off. But even if it stays there, those are three students that we can serve, again, who would otherwise not have these things. So we're asking that the school system please get behind this and please support this venture from the Michael L. Sutton Social Club. Also, I would like to point out, as part of this program, if the school does get on board with it, once you identify the student, we do need certain demographic information. Some sponsoring organization will have grants and funds of that nature that will have to serve a certain need. And so those basic demographic information, that basic demographic information will let that sponsoring organization know if they are matched with the right kid to be able to serve. Again, they wouldn't need to have that identifying information to be able to reach out to that kid directly, but they would know that those dollars are going in the right place. So this is a program. Our request tonight is that the school system gives us some consideration and reach out to the social club. You can reach out to me through the social club. I am the vice president. And any of our officers, and I can communicate that information if you all put a coordinator in charge of this venture. That's our request tonight, and that's what we want to present before the board.
Melissa Vito Smith.
Good afternoon, esteemed community members. My name is Melissa Smith, and I'm here to, last week I pitched a plan to the district, and I'm here to respond directly to the response that I got. It sounds like this. Thank you for reaching out about your idea. While I agree that this sounds like a wonderful idea, I will defer to Dr. Blackley. This will need to be a building level idea as we do not promote or create clubs and require them for schools. So here's my response to that. I teach at Northwest High School. I'm in a doctoral program. I'm 90 days from finishing my dissertation. And I set programs up this year where my kids perform service learning, and they were teaching at the library and at the Kleeman Center. And so the reason I'm here today is to talk about a district-wide program where students from all the high schools meant, we, our first speaker today talked about the Boys and Girls Club of America. Why can't our students do that? So we're all here because of education, right? And so today we're talking about public versus private school. Maybe we should go back to what John Dewey first said. When the school introduces and trains each child of society into membership within such a little community, saturating him with the spirit of service and providing him with the instruments of effective self-direction, we shall have the deepest and best guarantee of a larger society that is worthy, lovely, and harmonious. I have 100 students in my club. I receive no funding, no resources, nothing. I've been funding this with my own money. But my students are engaged. We had seminars last year that talked about engaging Gen Z. So I found a way to engage Gen Z. Austin P. already does it. It's service learning. It's interacting with your community. It is finding a way to tie academic curricula to community needs. It is how we're going to push these kids into college and career readiness, right? And so I pitched this program, and I was really saddened to learn that we didn't have the resources and that it needed to be a building level idea because we don't promote clubs. But then, okay, let's change the wording. It's not a club, it's a program. Let's turn this into a program where our students can achieve the following. Because I believe in my idea so much, I went to Austin P. I have the whole college, I'm not here alone in addition to these kids. In spirit, I have the College of Education. I went to Dean Chandler, and he said yes to a youth leadership conference for 100 students from each high school. Can you imagine what our kids can do if we allow them to work together within the district? We'd be the first district that used virtual learning to get our kids to partner together. Here's an example. What would happen if the students at West Creek and Northwest in Kenwood could work together to identify common problems with their school and work with teacher mentors and principals to create a program to address those needs? They can come up with mental health initiatives, PBIS campaigns, community garden, or even a STEM-led box race. I want to go to those things. I want to see my students achieve great things while they're in high school. Leadership is service, and service is leadership. We need to teach them how to serve if they are going to lead. And so this is drastic, but here it is. Here's a check for $50,000. I will fund the program myself, the same way I've been funding the two programs at the library and at the Kleeman Center. And here's one more thing. No one in the district, no principal, ever came to see our program, but the private school did. Last week, Tuesday, Clarksville Academy came, and they sent a really nice review. The principal came, and they're going to have their own outreach program. So I'm pleased asking, please reconsider. Let's all work together so that we can get this done. Because our kids can have a youth leadership conference, they can work with Clarksville Parks and Rec. Each one of them can come out with, we can have a peer mentor program with the students. That's service learning. What else can happen? There is a community cultural fair with Parks and Rec. I've lined all of it up. I put it in the document, and I sent it. It can't just be one high school, so.
Rebecca Zintek.
I'm Becky Zintek. I stand before you today. I am not angling for political brownie points or craving personal accolades, nor do I have any interest in trading my voice for popularity or conformity. Y'all should know that by now. It's high time we address the elephant in the room. It's not AC's hat. Our board's longstanding habit of prioritizing the status quo over the well-being of our children and families in this district. This pattern of behavior has persisted for far too long, decades even. It's about time we put an end to it. I have personally witnessed and experienced the repercussions of advocating for children beyond the district's willingness to act. It's brutal. It's heart-wrenching. And no parent should have to stand before you sobbing like that mother did or like I have to all of you for years. You should be ashamed of yourself to put parents through that after their children have been tortured, and they have to deal with that, too. I hope none of you have to experience that. Sorry, I went off script. I've personally witnessed and experienced the repercussions of advocating for our children beyond the district's willingness to act. When concerns arise, whether it be regarding a teacher's behavior or students' behavior or flawed policies, lots of them, or even presence of inappropriate material within our schools, the response from the board and administration has often been dismissive, at best, hostile at worst. Instead of addressing the root of the issue, there is a tendency to deflect blame onto concerned parents, demonizing, discrediting them rather than acknowledging the validity of the concerns. Far too much focus is placed on tone and tactics. You don't need to worry about my tone. You need to worry about what happened. Tone and tactics of parents rather than the issues they are bringing forth is unacceptable. That it often takes a crisis, a red flag set ablaze before any meaningful action is taken. We should not have to wait until harm is done before addressing issues that are concerning or outright wrong. As stewards of our children's education and safety, it is vital, you, to be proactive rather than passive or reactive. I'm sorry, inactive. Inactive is actually definitely the word. Transparency and accountability must become the cornerstones of our district's governance. Study sessions should be dedicated and long, not 20 minutes so we can get on out of here, dedicated to thorough discussions of real issues backed by data and focused by on finding viable solutions. Board meetings should be centered on policies aimed at creating a healthy and safe environment for both students and staff. I do back the teachers. They are in a war zone out there with no help. Violence and sexual assaults on school grounds should not be swept under the rug or regulated to whispers behind closed doors. These matters deem public action and attention. In fact, you guys should be asking for that data to be made public regularly. We need to know what our kids are experiencing at the school. We must acknowledge the failures. Acknowledge the failures. That's how we move forward. We acknowledge them of the past and commit to new culture of accountability and responsiveness. This begins with listening to the concerns of parents, not worrying about their character or how loud they are or if you like them or not. Listen to their concerns. They're real. Of parents without resorting to intimidation or dismissal, very common. It continues with the commitment to transparency in all aspects of district operations. I urge each one of you to consider the gravity of this situation we face and to prioritize the well-being of our children above all else. Let us not shy away from the difficult conversations or shy away from necessary changes. Only then can we truly fulfill our duty to the, sorry, you can truly fulfill the duties to the families you serve. You serve because you were elected to come here and do a job, not to just pretend that she's in charge. Y'all are in charge, and the lovely Karen England will figure it out for you.
Next speaker is Karen England.
I didn't anticipate the introduction. I'm Karen England, a parental rights advocate, and I want to say that I'm utterly dismayed at the depths of the negligence and irresponsibility that have become symbolic of this school board. It is so disappointing when I speak to the public, I speak to elected officials, I speak to candidates, and they are repeatedly told that the board cannot make policy, that years ago they ceded everything to the director of schools, and that because of that, they don't set policy. They only do awards and name schools. I also hear how you're the only board in Tennessee that does this. I actually think you're right. You're the only board in the nation that does this, and I travel the nation going to school boards. None of them would be as short and as meaningless as these school boards. You all are not guardians of education, but you're architects of complacency. I'm going to go over your own, and anyone can find this online, governance policies, and you can decide whether or not the board has authority. Or if you've chosen to abdicate it to the director of schools at the advice of your legal counsel, who's had several things that he has stated wrong. Some of these policies have been revised as recently as 2022. So this idea that you can't do anything about it, you've been revising them. Let's talk about executive limitations. I'm so tired of hearing executive limitations. Because of executive limitations, we can't do anything as a board. Let me explain executive limitations to you. It's the limits that the board puts on the executive. And in your own policies, you have 13 of them that are very specific, and it explains exactly what you want the executive to do in these 13 areas, areas like the school year calendar, rezoning, financial planning. Nowhere in the executive limitations does it say that the board has no authority and you've abdicated it to the director of schools. Nothing, nothing in this document limits the board from doing your job and setting policies. That is actually the whole point of a school board. Don't believe me? Listen to your own policies. And also, let me say this, even if, and I'm not ceding it, you did delegate it to the director of schools, the state did not. I cannot tell you how many areas you are out of compliance where the state says the governing board shall set a policy about library books. It doesn't give you guys the right to say, we're not going to listen to the state. We're going to do our own thing and just let her do it. You're in violation of the law in numerous areas. So your own governance policy, global governance commitment, the board supporting the work of staff, the welfare of students, and the entrance of the community holds itself accountable to the citizens of Clarksville Montgomery County, your words here, by ensuring that all actions it takes is consistent with the board's policy and beliefs, not the director's schools. Under your governing style, the board will hold itself accountable for governance with excellence. The discipline will apply to attendance, preparation for meetings, policymaking. Number three, under your governing style. The board will, not may, will direct, control, and inspire the district through the careful establishment of written policies reflecting the board's values and perspectives. That's the board's values and perspectives. Job description. To distinguish the board's own unique job from the jobs of the director of schools, the staff and the school board will concentrate its efforts on the following. Number two, developing written governance policies. That's what you all are supposed to be doing. As exciting as awards are in naming a school is, I don't think that's what you ran on, and if you did, I don't think people would have voted you in. Executive limitations, those are constraints that you all put, you choose to put on the director of schools because we elected you to do that. Clearly, the board, according to your own governance policy, is in charge of policies and not the director of schools. The director of schools is to implement policies through procedures. Your abdication of duty is not merely a failure to fulfill obligations. It's a betrayal to the trust placed in you by the public that has elected you. it's a betrayal to the trust placed in you by the public that has elected you. And that's each and every one of you. Perhaps the most damning all is your silence. Your silence speaks of complicity. Complicity in the preservation of the status quo that serves to preserve only your own interests. The time for excuses has long passed. I implore you to rise to the occasion to reclaim the mantle of leadership that you have so shamefully.
Next speaker is Sarah Ring.
Hi, I stand before you today, not just as a parent, but as a voice for all families whose children's safety and well-being depends on the trust we place in CMCSS. Our faith in this trust has been profoundly shaken by the recent events at Mingwood Elementary. Events that reveal a disturbing pattern of negligence that cannot be ignored. My daughter Gracie, right there, was diagnosed with ARFID, which is a phobia-based eating disorder, which requires the use of a G-tube for nutritional needs. Following a critical hospitalization in January of this year for being failure to thrive and malnourished, a detailed health plan was created to ensure Gracie's health and allow her to participate in school just like any other child. This plan, however, was not supported as it should have been by the school nursing staff, specifically the school nurse, Ms. Crystal Hollins. Despite providing Ms. Hollins with explicit medical orders from Gracie's medical team, our trust was betrayed. Orders were questioned, ignored, and Gracie was left without her feeds on multiple occasions. The negligence was compounded by a lack of communication and a filing of a baseless report to CPS suggesting abuse on me and my husband's part. This is not an isolated incident. The same disregard for students' welfare was observed in a recently published news story regarding the CMCSS teacher who was lightly reprimanded after assaulting a student. Such patterns suggest a systematic failure to hold CMCSS employees accountable for actions that put our children at risk. Our experience reveals a lack of training, oversight, and accountability within the nursing services and by extension, the broader school system. Requests for investigations into these matters were met with barriers and denial of access to the investigation results. This lack of transparency undermines the trust between families and the school system. It is imperative to understand that the actions and inactions of school staff have real lasting impacts on students' health and educational outcomes. Our children, including those with special needs, deserve an education environment that is not only nurturing but safe. We are not seeking retribution. We are here to advocate for systemic changes that prioritize student safety and well-being. We urge you to, one, implement comprehensive training for all school health personnel on the needs of students with medical conditions and special needs, ensuring that they are equipped to provide the necessary care before being permitted to work alone. Number two, establish clear and transparent procedures for investigating complaints against school personnel with outcomes that are shared with the concerned parties and available to the public. Number three, create a culture of accountability where employees are held responsible for their actions, ensuring that negligence, abuse, and malpractice are met with appropriate consequences. And number four, enhance communication channels between school staff and families, ensuring concerns are addressed promptly and effectively. Our goal is a partnership where every parent can send their child to school with the confidence that their well-being is in capable and caring hands. Let's work together to rebuild this trust to ensure a safe and supportive learning environment for all students as a board, your action or inaction. In response to these issues, we'll speak volumes about the values of CMCSS. Thank you for your time.
Our next item tonight is approval of consent agenda. I have a motion from Mr. Patterson. Second from Mr. Garland to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? I said they're wrong. Cast your votes. It's not lighting up to cast a vote, gentlemen. Ms. Pace, do you have something to say?
No.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of consent agenda, raise your hand. Passes seven oh. Next item is policy monitoring. Dr. Vedder.
Board, please find in your packet information on executive limitation five, financial administration. This executive limitation has 12 compliance expectations to ensure the director of schools shall not cause nor allow fiscal jeopardy or material deviation from the annual budget or budget policy adopted by the board. All revenues are scheduled to be spent in accordance with the approved budget. No funds have been borrowed to date for the current fiscal year without approval, nor have funds been expended from the fund balance without authorization. The actual ending fund balance will always be greater than the 3% based on the current levels of revenue and expenditures. Payrolls are processed per the published calendar and all other obligations are paid in a timely manner. Purchases are made consistent with the state and district procurement codes. Sufficient internal controls are in place as documented in annual financial audits. In addition, all board accounts are audited annually by the state comptroller's office. Likewise, individual school accounts are audited per a contract with a certified public accountant and receivables are pursued as appropriate. Updates regarding revenue collections, rising costs, and capital projects are provided to the board through work sessions. To conclude, any proposed changes to the budget are approved by the board and county commission and quarterly financial reports are provided to both the board and county commission. Chairman Griffey, this concludes executive limitation five.
Is there a motion to approve executive limitations five report? I have a motion from Ms. Pace and a second from Ms. Berry. Any discussion? Discussion is closed. Please open the vote. Still not getting the access. All in favor? Passes seven oh.
Board, please find in your board packet information on executive limitation 12, rezoning. This executive limitation has three compliance expectations. Because demographics change and populations increase or decrease, the director of schools shall not fail to recommend and implement rezoning decisions to include equitable distribution of resources in all affected schools. The project team and written policy feedback was received and public hearings were held. The initial zoning recommendation for the 24-25 school year was shared with the board on December 12th, 2023. The final recommendation to implement the plan was presented on January 2nd, 2024 and the zoning plan was approved by the board on January 22nd, 2024. Chairman Griffey, this concludes executive limitation 12.
Is there a motion to accept limitation 12? Motion from Ms. Berry. Is there a second from Mr. Patterson? Any discussion? Discussion is closed. I'm gonna try it again. Please open the vote. All in favor, raise your hand. Passes seven oh. Next item, board discussion and consideration. First item is naming of elementary school number 26. Is there any board member who has comments on the naming of the school number 26? Mr. Nelson.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I ask that we push that back, that we accept naming all the names from our constituents at the next study session and we move our voting for the school name to our next regular meeting.
Mr. Nelson, do I hear a motion in there to table this?
Yes, sir. A motion that we table this to our next study session to acquire all the names that are out there.
Is there a second to Mr. Nelson's motion to table? I have a second from Mrs. Pace. Any discussion on the motion to table? All in favor of tabling the naming of the school until our next meeting, which will be included in our study session? I'm sorry, Mr. Garland, your light is flashing. Any other discussion?
I thought we was gonna be discussing our names that we wanted to actually present, but since we're not, I can wait till the next meeting and it'll be fine.
Well, if this motion fails, we will. Motion to table is on the floor. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion being tabled? All opposed? Motion passes five two. You and Mr. Garland with opposing votes. I'm sorry, I was holding a pen. I counted mine in favor of the motion, but I didn't raise my hand. I guess it threw you off, I'm sorry.
Yeah, my question was, which way?
Was it disapproved?
It was approved to table the motion, which means it will be discussed at the next work session and on the agenda for the next meeting. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Next item is proposed resolution by Ms. Berry. Ms. Berry.
Yes, Chairman Griffey. I did submit a resolution for the board to look at and study and I won't go into it, all the details. But I do want to say that Clarksville Montgomery County Schools provide a free and quality education for all students, including our students with disabilities. Vouchers would basically make a difference and it would interfere drastically with our public schools by taking funding from public schools to support private schools and they're not ran by elected board members. I also want to say that our educational institutions receiving public funding should have the same accountability and performance reporting expectations so that parents and the public may better understand the use of our public funds. In addition, people do have a choice. It exists in CMCSS. You can make a transfer from one school to another. You can homeschool, virtual school, or your students can attend private schools. However, I urge the board to please oppose vouchers for those reasons and many others. Because vouchers basically would take tax dollars from our budget to fund those private sectors. And we all know that public school is the great equalizer. People can say what they want to, but we're held to high standards and we respect our educators who work so hard to meet the needs of our students. And I'm offended by some of the things that people say. I put my blood, sweat, and tears in public education for 35 years. Also faulted my military husband. Public schools are the best schools in the world. You can say what you want to, but I put our schools up to any private or any homeschool. You know, I had students that came in from some of those situations and I had to remediate them many times. We're gonna do what we have to do as educators and I applaud our staff who worked so very hard to protect our public schools. I don't want to prolong the time, but I would like your support to oppose vouchers. Did you know that Ohio is almost bankrupt because of vouchers? Georgia has spent approximately $141 million supporting vouchers and they, it's not the end. We must be smart Tennesseans. They think we're not, but I say as long as we stay above Alabama, we're doing okay. But Alabama has vouchers and I'm telling you, their budget is slim to none. I ask that you support opposing vouchers for the said reasons and I will always do what's best for public schools. And if you don't like what I do, vote me out.
Mr. Garland.
Yeah, I, I, I just have one thing that I would like to say about vouchers. The way the state has set this up, it says that anyone can apply, but it doesn't say that everyone's gonna be accepted. Anyone can apply for the vouchers, but not everyone will be accepted. I've done my look into what this voucher is gonna do for the children of Tennessee. Basically, an average school that has vouchers, they're gonna give us $7,000 plus per child, but it's gonna cost that family about $12,000 per child to send them to school. So if you got five kids, you gotta come up with $20,000 to get all five of them into school or decide which one are not going to go to a public charter school. Basically, what I'm trying to say, ladies and gentlemen, that if you don't have, if you have your child, if the children are in private schools today and the parents are paying $15,000 a year for that child, all the vouchers is gonna do is give that parent back $7,000. In other words, gonna cost that parent $8,000 to send the kid to school. And for that reason, I support opposing vouchers for Tennessee overall. Because vouchers are not for every child. The vouchers are for the children of parents who can afford to send them to school, private schools today. So parents, when you go back home and people are talking to you about what a public charter school would do for their child, think about it. Public charter school is gonna require our county commissioners to fund those schools once they've come into Montgomery County. Public charter school will probably increase taxes on parents and the elderly that live in this community that don't have children in school. Public charter school is gonna identify just those parents, just those kids whose parents can afford to send them to private school. And nine times out of 10, the only children that's gonna be able to go are the ones that are in private schools today. So if it's $12,000, you still, you got to fund the five in order to get the seven. And then you got to buy books, you got to buy all the other stuff that goes with it. So public charter, I mean, the vouchers are not for public schools. The vouchers are not for the poor. The vouchers are for those that can afford to send their kids to private schools today, not tomorrow. So for that reason, I support this resolution and I ask the board to support it as well.
Mr. Mayberry. Mr. Mayberry?
Tonight, I'm opposed to Ms. Berry's resolution. I'm gonna speak about it for a second, and we're not, this resolution, the bill had nothing to do with charter schools, just wanna make that point upfront. I love and support our public schools here in Clarksville Montgomery County. As I've said in the past, I'm a graduate, my kids are here, I absolutely love our schools. I support many options, though, for learning, including public schools, homeschooling, microschools, career and technical education, private or parochial schools, magnet schools, charter schools, online learning, and early college, high schools, whatever the parent feels best for their child. Not only am I for these diverse sources of education, but recent polling here in Tennessee suggests that sixty-eight percent of Tennesseans also support school choice, including eighty-five percent of Republicans and fifty-six percent of Democrats are also for school choice. And indeed, the majority of Tennesseans are for this measure. I'm a huge proponent for Governor Bill Lee's call for school choice here in Tennessee. As the Education Freedom Scholarship stands, this program will, will fund, well, I'm sorry, this program will fund separately from TESA, which means there will be no, there will only be indirect impact on school districts if someone takes advantage of the scholarship, the same as any student that's already leaving our schools for any other reason as homeschooling. Also, currently as legislation stands, eighty percent of the House bill is going to fund public schools. Many agenda items on this, that's been on the CMCSS docket or TSBA, as well as I said in a conference call recently and heard from them, teacher, and teachers across this county, things they have desired for years are in this bill, and it's going to be an answer for them. The base per student will rise from six thousand eight hundred and sixty, which is what currently with TESA funds each student, to seven thousand seventy-five. This will go for the public school system. If the bill passes, TESA's funding formula base will increase by about two hundred and fifteen dollars per student, resulting in an overall increase of roughly eight million three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in CMCSS. In addition, the bill will give seventy-five dollars per student enrolled in CMCSS in the district for capital projects. This is a combined total of roughly eleven million three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of new revenue that's gonna go to Clarksville Montgomery County schools. The Education Freedom Scholarship choice funding will initially be for twenty thousand students statewide, which is about two percent of the student population. The legislation has built in that it will step up incrementally only if certain thresholds are met. Half of the scholarships are set aside based on income, and the other half will be for anyone who applies. The income basis would mean a family of four who has to make roughly around a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars a year, because they're considering Nashville, Memphis, those other areas. I've contacted local private schools in the area and have inquired about tuition costs. As Mr. Garland suggested, it's twelve thousand dollars. There is one school in town that's twelve thousand dollars, but most are far below. The suggested seven thousand seventy-five dollars is indeed lower than the full tuition, but many of our local private schools have scholarship opportunities that are also income based, and they have suggested that it's a real possibility from a student, complete tuition can be paid in conjunction with the tuition paid by the Education Freedom Scholarship, or it will make it very affordable for these families. In this bill, the assumption of those who do choose to enroll in a private school is that sixty percent of them have already been in private schools right now, and that forty percent of them would be enrolling out of public schools based on similar legislation pace passed on other states. With all of this, the truth is that Montgomery County is a fast-growing district with an average of twelve hundred students per year. I'm, I'm proud of that. With the base rising and additional funding added to public schools, this legislation will add to the budget of CMCSS by millions, not take away. And it will be the beginning steps to allow school choice to get off the ground in Tennessee. In states with similar legislation, once school choice is fully, widely and fully funded, ninety percent of all students in the state stay in public schools. I believe parents are a child's first and foremost educator and have the primary responsibility for their children's education. Parents have a right to direct their children's education, their care, and their upbringing. We should fund children, not specific systems, and allow one's individual tax dollars to go to the schooling of their choice. The vast majority will choose CMCSS, but I believe it should be their choice. So once again, I'm against this resolution, and I do want to put it in the resolution that the dollar amount is wrong, and, and nothing in the current legislation, it was in the legislation, but nothing in the current legislation does anything with homeschoolers as the resolution suggests. And this is not a voucher at all, this is a, this is actually a scholarship. Thank you.
Mr. Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a hard act to follow these three speakers before me, Ms. Berry and this gentleman beside him and Mr. Mayberry, but I'll keep mine brief. The, I was gonna use twenty thousand dollars cost per, per year for private school, and if you kick in the seven thousand, that leaves thirteen thousand. And I know a person that can afford the twenty thousand certainly would look forward to obtaining the seven thousand where they only have the balance of, of the thirteen. But hopefully that it is based on, on, on income, low income, but again, if I was in that particular category, I know I would be applying for it. And I have read all over several instances in Tennessee that were, the monies have been abused, and you know, if in fact it does become in the vouchers and the charter schools, that hopefully that they would have a good person auditing it and taking care of it. But I'm against public money for public schools. I'm sorry. I like public money for public schools, but I do not like public money for the private schools. And people that are, are for the vouchers, the vouchers in charter schools, they, they're working, they're working hard. They're donating money for campaigns, thousands of dollars that where they can, your lesser governments, smaller governments can be able to support these vouchers and charter schools. And, and if you don't like it, you need to get off your bottom, pack your lunch and bring it, and, and fight against this as best we can. I know, I know the, it hasn't passed yet, but it, but it, you know, when government takes over, it looks like it would, but it's just to me, it's, it's, it's asinine to be able to spend or want to spend public money for private schools. Thank you.
Mr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So some of you may know, I'm the son of a New York City police officer and New York City public school teacher. And they did send me to parochial school. I did start out there, and I found out there that those nuns will beat the hell out of you, okay? Whether you like it or not. But my parents, they worked very hard to allow me to attend that school. And then when it, when it wasn't a mutual beneficial return on it, I moved over to public school. And I'm a, you know, I could always say I have a PhD, public high school diploma, and I, I really appreciate that. The one thing that kinda worries me about vouchers is the fact that schools can be selective on, on who they accept in, and it's not, you know, where's the, the equality across the board for who gets into that program and who doesn't get into that program? We've gotta be careful with that. Anecdotically, I read a article from Birmingham, Alabama, where they had a similar program where they had the vouchers, and what they wanted them doing is the public school suffered significantly from that voucher, and the demographic of the schools had changed in about ten years from the public school. Most of minority students were going to the public schools, and most of the non-minority students were going to the private schools with the, with the vouchers. So we just wanna be careful, it's a kind of a slippery slope there. Thank you.
I give some latitude with this topic because it's under board discussion and consideration. But I do want to remind the board and Ms. Berry that she talked her position, but you need to put this in a motion if you want us to vote on it and get a second.
I make a motion that we consider opposing charter schools for vouchers for reasons.
I have a motion for Ms. Berry to consider approving the resolution that she's brought to the board. I need a second. Have a second from Mr. Garland. Any further discussion on the resolution that's brought to the board now? I'm, I'm gonna talk for a second on this subject. I strongly agree with Ms. Berry's remarks concerning Clarksville Montgomery County School System and others. I do feel that there are, we're talking about a state resolution here, and I do feel that there are systems in the state that are failing, and they need help. And this is a help for those situations. I hope that it's not one that gets out of hand as, as been projected, and hopefully they'll write it in a way that it doesn't before it's even voted on.
Mr. Chair?
It would be difficult for me to support a resolution against vouchers when there are situations in our state that they are needed. They're not in Montgomery County, and I don't see any need for them in Montgomery County in our school systems because of things Ms. Berry pointed out. But I just wanted to get that out, 'cause it seemed like every board member gave their opinion, and I did wanna give mine, but I have a tremendous amount of spec for Ms. Berry, Ms. Berry and her rationale behind this, but it is difficult for me to support a resolution telling the state that they cannot offer vouchers to, even to any systems at all. We should rewrite it and make it where it was applicable to failing systems and that type thing, but, and hopefully they will before it goes to a vote at the state. Any other discussion? Ms. Pace, you're next. Ms. Pace? Ms. Pace, let me correct myself, I looked wrong, Ms. Berry was next.
Mr. Chair, this resolution was written for Clarksville Montgomery County.
Thank you. Ms. Pace?
I know this is, has been a tremendously long meeting, so I'm not gonna say much, but first of all, I just wanted to say I've been a longtime passionate supporter of public schools, but I had a question. Is what, what we're voting on tonight, does it have any muscle to it? I mean, we voted to reject charter schools last year. What is this doing additional?
Well, this is totally different. This is school vouchers. Mr. Garland did mention charter, charter schools in remarks, but they're not a part of this resolution or a part of what the state is, has before it to vote on about vouchers. They're not tied together. They are many, many times tied together in speeches and talks, but this resolution, and you can ask Ms. Berry for clarification, is about vouchers only, correct?
This resolution is for vouchers only.
Okay.
And it's for Clarksville Montgomery County schools. And we, once we vote, if we vote to oppose vouchers, we will send it to our representatives that represent Clarksville Montgomery County.
Did that answer your questions?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Called a vote, all in favor of the resolution, signify raising your hand. All opposed? It passes five to two. Next item, promised by Fort Campbell School Liaison Officer. I see her now.
Good evening, Dr. Luden-Vetter, board members and commission. My name is Karen Watkins-Jewf, and I'm the school liaison officer at Fort Campbell. We have come to the end of Music in Our Schools Month this March, and we are fast approaching the month of the military child in April. Our theme from the installation is Military Children: Brace, Fearless, and Resilient. Spirit Week is April fifteenth through the nineteenth, and Saturday, April twentieth, we're gonna have a Kids Fest on the installation from nine to two, and you can visit our MWR Facebook for more information. In School Support Services, we will host a Next Step 101 College Fair at the Fort Campbell Education Center. The date is April ninth at two. Hopkinsville Community College will be there, Austin Peay, Embry-Riddle, Embry-Riddle, our inaugural university, will be there, and there will also be a presentation given by financial advisors. So come out and learn about programs and financial aid, scholarships offered by the state colleges and universities. And me and the other school liaison, Ms. Garrett, we will also be there on hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patterson?
Mr. Jim Mann, Mr. Jim Mann, before you leave, I'd like to recognize him, Mr. Griffey. Excuse me for being out of order.
I didn't know he was here, I would've already done it.
He's, I, I think he started on the school board when he was six years old. And Jim, how long were you on the school board?
Twenty-four years.
How long?
Twenty-four years.
Twenty-four years, you served as chairman, I know, and I just wanted to introduce him before he left there with Ms. D. And Jim has taught, taught me a little bit, what I know, not enough, but he, he taught me some, but I did wanna recognize him, and I believe, I don't know if it's Ms. Murtha, did she leave, but she was a former school board member too, but I believe she's left. But before you ran out the door, and I apologize, sir, for interrupting, but Jim, appreciate your service.
I would like to make one.
He, he likes to talk, too.
Mr. Mann, I'm gonna make one comment about Mr. Mann before he leaves. He is one board member that I worked with for several years, and I enjoyed every many of it, and the compliment I'm gonna give you is regardless to how badly we disagreed on an item or a subject from time to time, which we did and agreed on a lot too, we always left the room friends, and I, and I have always respected him for that and still do today.
I'd like to say you all are facing a lot of challenges. Give me a line, give the state a budget, you know. I gotta tell one more story, Mr. Griffey. I was a rookie, I just came on the school board, and Jim and, and Ken, they said, "Meet us at, meet you at Woodlong, we're gonna carpool down to Paris and have a TSBA meeting." And I sat in the back and I listened to them talk, and I didn't know what was going on, but sure had some good experiences.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. CEMCA representative, appreciate, I'm sorry to make you wait, Stephanie.
Hi, I'm Steffi Outlaw, President, Clarksville Montgomery County Education Association. I'm gonna make this really short because my watch already told me it was past my bedtime, so I just wanna say one thing. If the voucher bill was so popular, why did they continue to pack it with incentives to get votes? That should prove something to you. But I also want to thank you. Thank you for passing this resolution. Thank you for joining your counterparts in other parts of the state and adopting a resolution calling on the Tennessee General Assembly to fulfill their constitutional obligation to provide a system of public education for our children and to do right by all Tennessee students by rejecting the governor's proposal for a statewide voucher program. And also what he said. I forgot his name already.
Jim Mann.
Yes, all right. Thank you.
PET representative. PET representative.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Luna Vetter, this has been a heavy night of discussion, but I do want to celebrate public school teachers. This is my forty-second year of teaching, started when I was five. So we, we've been asked to take an upbeat survey, all the teachers, about how we feel the district is doing and things that we need to improve upon, and I thought, I think I need to take a student survey. So last week, I asked my students, what do you think we need to do to improve or help the school district? Some of these things I can really get on board with. So here's their suggestions. Here are their suggestions. We need to do more math, have pizza every day, put lemonade in the water fountains, I can get along with that, make us read a book every day and sing Happy Birthday, make teacup harder. I don't remember what, where that came from, which student, but I need to talk to him about that. Buy equipment for PE that makes us skinnier, I can get on board with that. Install spinning doors in the front lobby. We need a bat day, a hat day, a Batman day, and a book day. We need more field trips. We need to have a math night, more help with handwriting. We need to have a shorter day on Friday. I think teachers can get on board with that, too. Less testing. We need more teachers so that they have more time to work with students. That was my heart there. Science lab teachers, technology lab teachers, and ice cream at recess, but my favorite of all is teachers need to get paid more. So this was their survey, so take that to heart. Thank you.
Comments by county commissioners.
I just have a few brief comments. It's been an exciting meeting tonight, and I appreciate you all and your patience and your willingness to listen to the public and to the comments. I think it's extremely important. I'll listen to the discussion about the vouchers tonight, and I, I definitely disagree with the board's decision. Again, I'm, I'm not on the school board, but I really think it's important that you all give the public a chance, give your constituents a chance to have some input. There was no discussion of this resolution last meeting. It wasn't even discussed what it was, and, and I feel like it should have been. I've heard from some of my constituents about it, and the fact is this resolution asks the state to oppose any, any voucher resolution. It's not just specific to this legislation. This legislation is not perfect by any means, but the fact that the board's not willing to even consider any type of legislation, I think, is unfortunate. I think it's important that we listen to our constituents. It's important we remember that as elected officials, we are, we're elected officials. We represent our constituents first, not CMCSSS, not Montgomery County, and, and I really feel very strongly about that. So anyway, I just think we should have an above, an all-of-the-above approach. That's my personal opinion, and I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Comments for board members. Mr. Garland.
Yeah, I, I like people who have personal opinions. I have a lot of them, believe it or not, but I just think, I think all, I think every, I was very proud of all of those kids that was in here tonight that actually have excelled in the areas that they were awarded. I, I appreciate all of those that came and spoke because we are a diverse community. We all have our own opinions about a whole lot of things, but I have a strong, my strong opinion is that my job as the school board representative for District Five, as long as I'm in that position, is to try to speak on behalf of the children, making sure that we do the things that are needed to make sure that they get a quality education and a nice building with quality teaching and leadership. That's my goal as a school board representative. I say that to say this, and I didn't, I mean, I wanted to say something else, but one of the things, one of the reasons why I am so adamant about school vouchers, that my representative informed me that every time a child walk out of this school, the state will reduce our budget by that amount. Each child that walk out of this school, our budget will be reduced by that amount. Think about it. And if we need a school next year, if that child don't come back, what is our funding base, our funding body going to do to help us to get that new school? I tell you that it's going to require somebody to go and pocket, and it's going to be the citizens of this county that's going to have to pay for the people that are already sending their kids to private schools. Give them a reimbursement of seven thousand seventy-five dollars in order for certain kids to get a quality education, and I promise you, I mean, I mean, you can say what you want, or you can believe how you feel, that a child whose parent are making seventy, seven dollars and twenty-five cents an hour would never be able to go to that, those schools, but their tax dollars will be, they are taxed, they will be taxed, just like everybody else. That's wrong. That's wrong. That's wrong. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mayberry.
I, I just want to say that none of my comments are personal, it's just my beliefs, and I won't, I'm not going to continue to be in that, the drum of what I talked about earlier, but I do want to say, I'm very proud of all of our wrestling programs. If you don't know, I'm a huge wrestling fan, and so I have been a huge advocate for that, and I am excited that Mr. Renault and I, we talked last year, and we did get in the budget for middle school wrestling, said it will be a forthcoming thing, so I'm excited about that, and I think we're, it's looking at 2025, if, if I'm, if I'm correct. But anyways, I'm very excited about that, go middle school wrestling.
Mr. Patterson.
Thank you. I'm just sitting here, and it came, it came to me after the commissioner's comments, and I certainly appreciate your comments, and I don't know if this would be, if even if it would overrule the states, like, you know, we, we have additional tax and everything on, on our county, but if, maybe even if, if it's again proper that the county commission could authorize a vote by the people of Montgomery County in the next election, it would cost, be a very minimum to add that on to the, the election process, whether it be in August or in the November thing, to see how the people of Montgomery County actually feel. I know we're elected to represent them, you are, I am, but it's just a thought, and it might not overrule whatever the state finally comes out with, but just throwing that idea out. And the other thing, if, I won't be here, I've got five more months, but if you do elect to have a charter school, please don't name it after me, Mr. Garland. Do not name it after me. And I don't want to get on the, maybe the director's, some of the, her comments, but it's, it's been publicized that, that Mr. Chris Renee is, is leaving us because I'm leaving us. He said he had to leave, and I wish you would stay. I don't have a choice, but I wish you'd stay. You do an excellent job and have a great relationship, personality with us and with the county commissioners. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Berry.
I would like to thank the board for supporting the opposing vouchers, and we're doing it for the children. You know, I see it in Alabama as another means of segregation, and so we don't want that. And another thing, if that child is, get that, you said grant, a scholarship rather than call it a voucher, if he goes to that school and for whatever reason they decide not to keep that child, they still keep that seven thousand dollars, and so we don't get it back to fund that child's education. So we must be smart. We must do what's best for children, and I'm not here for personal reasons. I promise you, I'm here because I love the children, I love education, and I love to make sure that our staff have what they need, and Dr. Vetter, I just called Dr. Vetter, has our support to make sure that this district is the best that it can possibly be. Thank you.
Comments by director. I'm going to see now. Director's school report, sorry.
Good evening, board members. First, I will not acknowledge Chris Renee tonight because he is going to work every day until his last day, and so he's going to be here for a little while longer. Last week, we had the pleasure of celebrating two hundred and seventy seniors who were third year academic award recipients. A huge thank you to the CMC Education Foundation, who ensures that we honor students who have worked so hard throughout their high school career to exceed a ninety-three percentile grading average. Thank you to the board members and to the elected officials who also took time out of their evenings to attend. We are looking forward to our students experiencing the solar eclipse on April eighth. Educational activities are being planned, and ISO certified glasses have been purchased for all students and staff. Communication will be going out to parents this week, I believe, maybe even tomorrow. And on a final note, there will be a three-day weekend for Good Friday and Easter this weekend. I pray that everyone is able to celebrate with family and friends and take time to reflect on what truly matters. Mr. Griffey, this concludes my evening, my remarks for this evening.
This meeting is adjourned.